DM, I'll begin with roll call. Christian Sumano. Evelyn Ascona.
Here.
Charlotte McNair.
Here.
Beverly Sanchez. John Zimmerman.
Here.
Sue McGallegott. Carla Castaneda. Michael Belvin.
Here.
Ivan Adorno. Nancy Coppola. Nancy?
Nancy's on mute.
Yeah.
Nancy, can you unmute yourself so that we can have a formal yes? Star six if you're on the phone, little microphone button if you're. Okay, well, I think technically I'm going to mark her absent for now. And then John Cox.
Here.
Okay, we have quorum thankfully. All right.
I'm sorry, I'm here. For a minute.
There you go. All right, we have six.
John? Yeah, Dan, can we have the public announcement, please?
Sure, give me one second.
Who, who said, can you hear me?
Yeah, Charlotte, I got you on the list.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Let's see. There we are, there we go. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings at the zoning board of adjustment of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed under appropriate and board in the lobby of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows and has been transmitted to official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, name of the home news Tribune and Star Ledger. Additionally, a change of location, no, wait, no. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders to limit the size of public gatherings. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit gatherings and groups. The city of New Brunswick, zoning board of adjustment will meet, will continue to meet on a regular schedule, will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing and video systems. Where am I? Wait, public participation in public meetings has been revised and public may participate through our conference call and system. The public is encouraged to call into the call and system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the above notice to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and post in the back vestibule City Hall, visible to the public through the windows. Board professionals will also be available on the conference call. All parties on the call who have, will have an opportunity to hear the zoning board of adjustment meeting. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers and the public will be muted and will not, the board members will not be able to hear the call in. Sorry, I'm having a. During the public comment periods, I will first read comments issued to the board than those on the conference call and lines where it's interest in addressing the board will be organized by last name and the called upon speak. All organized members of the public will speak for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will time at the completion of each five minute period and notify you that your time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call and numbers should call planning department seven three two seven four five five zero five zero.
All right, salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all. Minutes of the board's March 22nd, 2001 meeting.
Eligible voters who are here today, Charlotte McNair, John Zimmerman, Michael Belvin, Nancy Coppola, and John Cox.
Hi, this is Nancy, I make a motion to approve.
This is John Zimmerman, I'll second it.
Charlotte McNair.
Yeah.
Charlotte?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you. John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes. Resolutions of memorialization, dialysis clinic Inc., 235 George Street, 52 Tabernacle Way, 54, 64 Bill Street, block 126, lot 3.017, 8.0110, ZB 2019-02. I believe this is being deferred, is that correct, Arvin?
That's correct. The applicant has requested that the resolution not be memorialized this evening. It's my understanding there'll be a subsequent application for the addition of one additional parking spot, which the board members may recall they had not noticed. So as long as they've granted an extension of time for memorialization, which they have, they've asked that we not go forward tonight.
Okay, do we need to have a motion on that or no?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. Public hearings, BRG Morel LLC, 52 and 58 Morel Street, block 77 lots, 30.01 and 32.02, ZB 2020-17. Preliminary and final site plan application with D use and C bulk variance to construct the new three-story multifamily residential building with 12 units and 13 parking spaces. Zoning District R-5A, single and two-family residential. I believe that this is going to be held until next meeting and that we will renotice.
My understanding is that they've asked us to carry this to the May 24th meeting. They have provided notice to the last meeting and it was carried from the the March meeting to tonight's meeting. They're asking to carry it again without need for additional notice. I believe their notice was proper, I'll double check on that, but if announcement can be made that this is carried until May 24th and that the applicant is not required to notice unless the notice originally was defective.
Okay, thank you. So this, this application will be carried to the May 24th meeting with no additional notice unless the previous note, notice was inaccurate. All right, we'll go on to the next one. BCUW Madeline, CHMI LLC, 293 Townsend Street, block 146, lot 6.01, ZB 2021-01. Preliminary and final site plan application with D use and C bulk variance to convert an existing four-unit eight-bedroom multifamily residential building into a six-unit six-bedroom multifamily residential building to be used as affordable housing for Middlesex County residents. Proposed improvements include removing, removal of the existing circular driveway and additional landscaping on the site. Zoning District R-5A, single and two-family residential. I do believe that this was also being held, correct, Arvin?
This, however, there was a defect in the notice, so the board doesn't have jurisdiction to carry the application. The applicant will be required to renotice for a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to requests for extension of approvals. One for Robert Wood Johnson Property Holding Corporation, 145 Somerset Street and 11 Hardingburg Street, block 49, lot 11.01 and block 49 lot 18.01, ZB 2018-01. Before we go further with any of this, is there any member of the board that had any conflicts or anything with this request?
Hi, it's Nancy Coppola. Yes, I have a conflict with the Robert Wood Johnson one, so I need to recuse myself.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Any other members have any conflict with this request? Seeing none? Arvin, do you want to read what the whole request is or anything or?
Certainly, there was a correspondence that was provided to the board on March the 25th and an updated April the 15th correspondence from Mr. Kelso, the applicant's attorney, requesting a an extension of time for the approvals for a period of two years. Under NJSA 40:55D-52, the board can grant on, it's reasonably satisfied that the applicant was barred, prevented directly or indirectly from proceeding with the development because of delays in obtaining required approvals.
We can't hear, Arvin.
Arvin, if you're still there, we haven't heard you, you dropped out.
Arvin, are you there? Hold on, Dan, let me pull it up and I'll, I'll read the rest of it. No, not 203. My fault, pull up 201, hold on. Okay. Hey, Dan, would you like me to just read the resolution for extension of approval?
Would you please?
Sure, absolutely. Whereas Robert Wood Johnson Property Holding Corp., one Robert Wood Johnson place, New Brunswick, New Jersey, 08901, applicant obtained certain approvals of its preliminary and final site plan use and subdivision application with variance to construct in addition to its existing Ronald McDonald House at 145 Somerset Street, New Brunswick. Such approvals were memorialized by resolution duly adopted by this board on or about April 23rd, 2018. The applicant, despite diligent efforts to obtain all necessary approvals and move forward with the project, was frustrated in its efforts due to issues related to the project professionals. NJSA 40 55D-52 authorizes this board upon a showing by the applicant to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that it was barred or prevented directly or indirectly from proceeding with this, with the development because of delays in obtaining legal requirement, required approvals. The board is reasonably satisfied that applicant was, in fact, preventing from, prevented from proceeding with the development because of delays in obtaining legally required approvals. Whereas the board is authorized to grant up to three extensions of time, not to exceed one year each, retroactively to the second anniversary of the approval. Therefore, be resolved that the applicant is hereby granted two extensions of its approvable approvals for a period of one year each from April 23rd, 2020 through and including April 23rd, 2022, subject to all conditions of approval. Be a further resolved, be a further resolved that copies of the resolution will be forwarded to the tax assessor, city engineer, the board's engineer, city building inspector, and the applicant. All right, do we have a motion to approve this resolution? A request for an extension?
Wait, I kind of want to ask Arvin if we need to open this up to the public or not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you will need to open it up to the public.
Okay. All right, Dan, at this time, would you like to make the list?
Sure. Given that there aren't too many people on the call, I'll open it up simply to the public. If there anyone on the public would like to be added to a list of speakers for no more than five minutes per person on this topic, on this extension, please announce yourself and I'll put you on the list. If you're muted, it's star six if you're on the phone. A little microphone button if you are on the computer. So again, if there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this specific extension, please announce yourself, we'll put you on the list.
Yeah, sure, Charlie Cradaville here.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Last call? Okay, seeing none? Give me one second, here we go, Mr. Cradaville. You are on. Oh, I know, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Mr. Cradaville, do you swear from to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Of course I do.
All right, you're on.
Thank you. So I really regretted missing this original hearing, I guess, back in 2018 because I tried to take every chance I get to see Mr. Tom Kelso and ask questions of him and I'm just curious if he can elaborate on what the holdup is with this Ronald McDonald House improvements. I'm not exactly sure what the the improvements are, but, but this was years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I can read in the, into the record, Mr. Kelso's March, the, I'm sorry, the 15th letter. Does please allow this letter to replace my letter to you on March 25th, which contained inaccuracies? As you may be aware, the undersigned attorney represents the applicant with respect to the above referenced matter. Please recall, the site plan subdivision variance applications were approved, I'm sorry, were granted by the zoning board of adjustment by resolution memorialized on April 23rd, 2018 under application Z 2018-01. Due to issues associated with the final site plan development, final plan development, excuse me, and related issues associated with the project professionals, the applicant was forced to postpone building the approved project. The applicant is now prepared to move forward, therefore pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40:55D-52, the applicant hereby requests an extension through April 23rd, 2022. Of all approvals granted to the applicant by the zoning board of adjustment, the applicant further requests that this matter be heard by the zoning board meeting scheduled for April 26, 2021. Thank you for your anticipated attention to this matter.
Okay, so should I take that to mean Mr. Kelso is not on the call to, to speak for the, the application, the request?
Mr. Chairman, generally these can be done, they're administrative in nature. If there's a change in zoning, we would certainly require the applicant's attorney to be present because that's really what they're asking for protection from, a change in the zoning which would have occurred. For instance, if the application was approved in 2018 and then in 2019 or 2020, I should say, the day after the two-year period expired, if there was a change in the zone, then they would have to make a showing that the application is affected by the change in zoning. In this case, there is no change in zoning, there still remained, there's no change in the zoning. This is still a, an approval that was permitted under the application itself as granted by the board. So the applicants need to be here is, is not necessary.
Thank you, Arvin.
Okay, so should I take that to mean he's not, not here tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, if he were here, I would ask him about the extent of his relationship with Robert Wood Johnson because I do know that in his role as the county council, he has helped to steer an immense amount of funds, millions of dollars to their organization, and I would submit respectfully, it's a conflict of interest for him to be representing this particular client before this particular board tonight. I do think that, you know, in general, the county government's top attorney shouldn't be representing developers before municipal land use boards in the very same county. But here it's especially egregious and just want to put, put for the record that, you know, Mr. Kelso should not be, he should pick one or the other. If he wants to, to take that six-figure salary and work for the county and put the residents' needs first in his work for the county, that's one thing, but for him to play it both ways and work for the county by day and at nighttime come to these meetings and represent the interests of developers who don't have the same interests as, as the residents is really appalling and egregious and, you know, I would, I would tell him that myself if he were here, but since he's not here, I do want that to be reflected on the record and, yeah, I, that's all I have tonight. I hope you're all doing well. Have a good evening and I'll see you soon.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak towards this resolution or extension of approval?
Charlie Cox, there is no one else on the, on the list.
Okay, oh, sorry about that, okay. We'll close the public portion.
Mr. Cox, can I, can I just weigh in for just a second? Because I think for, for much of the the introduction of this application, I was speaking and then I couldn't hear anything on your end. And then it cut back in, my audio cut back in as you were reading the resolution that was prepared for tonight if the board were to look favorably on the application. I just want to make sure that the board, in terms of procedurally, has the board voted? Or will the board now, the board should now be voting on whether to extend the time for two-one-year periods.
Yeah, correct, we're going to open it up and our, for a motion to approve it. Or, yeah, disagree, but yeah, we're going to put a motion out there right now. I think Dan was having an issue, he said.
What happened?
You okay now?
Yeah, like, all, everybody cut out, like, I couldn't hear anybody talking anymore.
All right, no problem. I thought you did say that, so that's why I was making sure you were back on. All right, so at this point, we're going to ask the, for a motion on this extension, request for an extension?
Yeah, this is John Zimmerman, I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
Do I have a second?
Evelyn, I'll second.
Yeah, that was Evelyn. Evelyn.
Who was that?
Yeah.
I think it was Charlotte.
Oh, I thought it was Evelyn.
Oh, Evelyn, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Evelyn Ascona?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlotte McNair?
Yes.
Thank you. John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
All right.
We'll move on to the second request. Request for an extension of approval, 203 Hamilton Street LLC, 203 Hamilton Street, block 57, lot 17, 1960, 61.01, ZB 2018-12. Would you like me?
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So if I could just summarize the request, the request itself is for an extension of time for one year. This was approved by the board on February 25th, 2019. So there's a two-year period of time that the, the application is protected and he changes to the zoning until February the 25th, 2021, which would have been just a couple of weeks ago. The applicant is asking for a one-year extension retroactive to February 25th, 2021 until February 25th, 2022 because they were unable to obtain approval from an outside agency, in this case, two outside agencies, DNRC and Al Commission and the Middlesex County Planning Boards.
All right, thank you. So at this time, I'd like you to open this up to the public for public comment. Dan, can you please start it?
John, as, as before, if there's any member of the public who wish to speak this, on this item, star six if you're on the phone to unmute yourself or the little microphone button if you're on computer, we'll put you on the list and you'll have five minutes to speak on this extension as well. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the extension for 203 Hamilton Street LLC? Anyone at all? Seeing none?
The public court, the public portion of this, of this matter is closed. Open up for a a motion?
Hi, John, it's Nancy, I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
I have someone.
Evelyn, Evelyn, I'll second.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Evelyn, all right. Evelyn Ascona?
Yes.
Charlotte McNair?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes. Then we'll move into annual report of the zoning board, review of the variances granted by the zoning board in 2020.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt again?
Sure.
If I could just read the proposed resolution for 203 Hamilton Street into the record. I know that Robert Wood Johnson was written into the record, but we do need a motion and a second and a vote to memorialize those two resolutions this evening as well.
Right, you want to read it or you want me to read it for you?
I can read 203 Hamilton quickly.
Sure, please.
Not that you couldn't. This is for 203 Hamilton Street LLC, 203 Hamilton Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, 08901, application Z 2000, 2018-12. Whereas 2003, I mean, 203 Hamilton Street LLC obtained approval for its site plan and variance applications to construct a four-story, 55-unit multifamily residential structure, 203 Hamilton Street. Whereas such approvals were memorialized by resolution duly adopted by this board on or about February 25th, 2019. Whereas the applicant, despite diligent efforts to obtain all necessary approvals and move forward with the project, was frustrated in its efforts due to delays in obtaining approvals from the Middlesex County Planning Board and Delaware Raritan Al Commission. Whereas NJSA 40:55D-52 authorizes the board upon showing by the applicant to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that it was barred or prevented directly or indirectly from proceeding with the development because of delays in obtaining legally required approvals. Whereas the board reasonably says, is reasonably satisfied the applicant was, in fact, prevented from proceeding with the development because of delays in obtaining legally required approvals. Whereas the board's required, is authorized to grant up to three one-year extensions of time, not to exceed one year each, retroactive to the second anniversary of the approval, therefore be resolved the applicant is hereby granted an extension of time of its approvals for a period of one year from February 25th, 2021 through and including February 25th, 2022, subject to all conditions of the approval. That would be the substance of the resolution of approval. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, if, if I could ask that you ask for a motion to adopt that resolution and also a second motion after that for the Robert Wood Johnson extension of time.
Sure, all right, no problem. Open it up to the board for an approval on the resolution?
Hi, it's Nancy, I will approve the motion that Arvin just read.
Yeah, this one's for 203 Hamilton Street.
Correct, yes.
Yes, thank you, Nancy.
This is John, I'll second it.
All right, Evelyn Ascona?
Yes.
Charlotte McNair?
Yeah.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Uh, Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes. All right, then we'll just go back one and we will ask for a motion on the, um,
Robert Wood Johnson.
Yeah, Robert Wood Johnson, uh, resolution for, a request for extension of approvals. It was already read, it was already read into the record. Do you want to read it again? Just to be?
No, no, since it was written into the record, it won't be necessary again. But if the record can reflect that Ms. Coppola is not participating in the vote either.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the resolution for the extension for Robert Wood Johnson?
Uh, yeah, this is John Zimmerman. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, John.
This is Evelyn. I'll second.
Was that?
Evelyn.
Okay. Okay. All right, Evelyn Escona?
Yes.
Charlene McNair?
Yeah.
Uh, John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes. All right, so now we'll move into the annual report of the zoning board review with the variances granted by the zoning board in 2020. Um, Dan, is anything should be read in or, um, or is Katie gonna speak a little bit about it or how should we do this?
No, I, I don't think we, uh, I don't think we, we did. We have the report there and, uh, basically if there's any feedback or comments that the, uh, the board has, they can make them and, uh, I guess we kind of go from there.
Okay. Any, uh, any member of the board have any questions, comments or anything on the, uh, zoning report from 2020? Any staff member? Professional staff members? Oh, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, if you opened it up to the public again and then it can be adopted.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll open the, open to the public for the City of New Brunswick zoning board of adjustments annual report for 2020. Any member of the public, uh, have any questions or comments on this? Please state your name so we can put you on the list.
Yeah, once again, it's star six to unmute yourself or little microphone button, uh, if you're on computer. Um, so does anyone at all who has any comments? Anyone at all? Seeing none?
I will close the public portion of this meeting of that, um, application to the, or annual report to the public. Uh, can I have a motion to approve?
Hi, it's Nancy. I, uh, so moved.
All right, this is John Zimmerman. I'll second it.
All right, thank you both. Uh, Evelyn Escona?
Yes.
Charlene McNair?
Yeah.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, next we have discussion items. Anyone have any this, uh, items for discussion? Seeing none? We'll move on to, uh, other matters of interest to the public. Um, once again, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody from the public has any thing they'd like to, uh, talk to us about, please state your name comfortably.
Anyone from the public, five minutes, please, uh, state your name, spell your last name. Uh, star six to unmute yourself, uh, little microphone if you're on computer to unmute yourself. Anyone? Anyone at all? Last call? Mr. Chair, seeing none?
I'll close that public portion of that meeting and at this point I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Hi, this is Nancy. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Evelyn, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night. Thanks all.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
At all. Bye-bye.